The hour of seven o'clock having arrived, I'm going to call the council to order. Let the roll reflect that all council members are present. Tonight, we're going to begin our meeting with the swearing in of the elected officials. We have two new council members I'd like to welcome tonight. Councilmember Lori Brockes and Councilmember Mark Vaughn, welcome. We're very excited about your public service here to the citizens and on this board. So, congratulations. We'll start first with Lori.
I, Lori Brockes, do solemnly affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America, the Constitution of the state of Minnesota and the ordinance of the city of Hastings and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of an at-large city council member for the city of Hastings, the counties of Dakota and Washington and state of Minnesota according to the best of my ability and understanding.
Councilmember Mark Vaughn.
Hi, Mark Vaughn. Do solemnly affirm that I respect the Constitution of the United States of America, the Constitution of the state of Minnesota and of the ordinances of the city of Hastings and I will faithfully discharge the duties of an at-large council member for the city of Hastings, counties of Dakota and Washington and the state of Minnesota according to the best of my abilities and understanding.
I, Paul Hicks, do solemnly affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America, the Constitution of the state of Minnesota and the ordinances of the city of Hastings and I will faithfully discharge the duties of mayor for the city of Hastings, counties of Dakota and Washington, state of Minnesota according to the best of my ability and understanding. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. As I did four years ago, I just have a brief statement I'd like to give if I may. You know, it continues to be an exciting time in the great city of Hastings and our community. As I assume the office of mayor for the third time, I am grateful for the many accomplishments that we have made since my first oath of office. The campaign for and the completion of the new river bridge that spans across this historic place on the Mississippi River. I'm grateful for the sense of renewal and excitement of the riverfront Renaissance that will bring our citizens and their river closer together for generations to come. I am grateful that we created the Hastings Economic Development and Redevelopment Authority, HEDRA, which has made it possible to expand our economic leverage to make projects like the Hudson Building become not just gossip, but reality. I am grateful that we have shown fiscal courage and discipline to successfully lead our city through the worst economic conditions since the Great Depression. I am grateful how we have created more lines of communication to our valuable and viable business community, to our award-winning school district, and of course, to our public at large. I'm grateful not only as mayor, but as a citizen, to have a city workforce that is so dedicated and committed to making our lives safer, happier, and more productive than ever before. I'm grateful to be working with the talented, visionary, and devoted members of this Hastings City Council. Councilmembers, it has been said that leadership is a noble calling. In addition to meeting well-defined strategic objectives, leaders must also help their organizations make meaningful contributions to social issues, economic growth, political stability. That is why effective organizational leadership plays a vital role in shaping our world. Councilmembers, you have met and continue to do so meet that challenge. And I know that you have shaped our world. I know you will continue to work as you always have in the best interests of the citizens of our great community. And I know by speaking to our citizens that how proud they are of each and every one of you. Finally, Hastings does have its challenges, to be sure. We need to continue to be excellent stewards of taxpayer dollars. We need to continue to monitor and investigate the quality of the services we provide. We need to explore transportation options inside our borders as well as outside. We need to help provide resources to our youth and be sensitive to their needs. And we need to continue to be vigilant against crime and drug use. These challenges are not unique to Hastings. But what will be unique is to meet these challenges head-on with positive results. As Mary Ann Williamson once said, "In every community, there is work to be done. In every heart, there's the power to do it." In that spirit, let us continue to move Hastings forward. It has been an honor and privilege to serve as your mayor, and I look forward to the next four years. Thank you.
Okay. We've taken the roll call. A quorum has been established. Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of December 15th? Counsel, you have those minutes? Is there any additions or corrections to the minutes of that meeting? Seeing none, they stand approved. Items to be considered? Any additional items to be considered? Seeing none, we'll go to consent agenda? Counsel, what's your wish? Councilmember Nelson makes a motion to approve, seconded by Councilmember Brockes. That motion is now before the body. Is there any discussion to that motion? Seeing none. All those in favor of that motion say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Next, we have a warding of contracts and public hearing. We have a public hearing tonight to amend city code chapters 95 and 155 exterior lighting. Who's going to talk about that tonight? Okay. Justin, welcome to the meeting. We're very glad to have you here.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and council members. Currently, the city code states that lighting on a property line can only be so high. Example is one-foot candle at a commercial property line and a half-foot candle at a residential property line. This has worked reasonably well. But there's a few times in the past few years that even though the photometric plan that was provided by an applicant showed the lighting levels to be within reason, there was issues that came up later. And afterwards, it was difficult to address those. So, we've brought forward this proposal to address some of those issues. And it's laid out in your packet, but the main changes would be to require the necessary shielding and similar devices on fixtures to only light the intended areas and programmable switching systems be included in the design of the lighting system so they can be shut off after a certain amount of time and require recessed fixtures and fuel canopies for so the lights don't bother people in the general area. These regulations would apply to new site plans and any change in existing lighting situations where 25% of the lighting system is replaced. And there's exclusions for streetlights, motion lights, and 24-hour operations. The planning commission reviewed this at four meetings and voted 7-0 to recommend approval at their December 8th planning commission meeting.
Thank you for that presentation, Justin. Appreciate it. I will now open the public hearing. Is there anyone here who would like to speak to this issue in regards to the amendments to city code chapters 95 and 155 exterior lighting? Anyone here who would like to speak to that issue? Okay. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Counsel, let's bring that issue before us. What's your wish? Councilmember Schultz.
Your honor, I'll make a motion to approve, but I also have a question.
Okay. Councilmember Schultz makes a motion to approve. Is there a second to that motion? Seconded by Councilmember Balsanek. That motion is now before the body. Councilmember Schultz.
Justin, will the new guidelines be only for things moving forward? Or will they have an effect on existing lighting situations?
Their effect on existing situation would be limited to them making changes to 25% of the existing system. Also, the total light limit would still be in effect. So, if they did change things out, it would still, it couldn't be any higher than the current requirement of a half-a-foot candle at a property line for residential and one-foot candle at a commercial property line.
I need him to repeat something. The 25%, can you explain that to me a little bit?
If they were going to replace 25% of their lighting system, then the whole lighting system would have to meet the current standards.
Okay. We have a motion before the bodies. Is there further discussion to the motion? Okay. I just have a quick comment. I'd like to offer an amendment, actually. I see on the A, 155.5, 3.5, in the new language, we use the word wastage. And I'm not always quite sure what that is. That's probably a new word. I give the author, whoever made that word, credit. But looking at over, I'm wondering, Counsel, if we can just have it say, "After the word needed, comma, decreasing unnecessary, unnecessary light." So, I would propose that we delete the words "the wastage of" and insert "unnecessary." I think it reads better. That would be my recommendation. And I'll move that amendment. Councilmember Alangi moves a second to that amendment, that motion. Okay. We have the Hicks amendment before us. Just to be clear, it's under A. The second to the last line where it says decreasing, after that, delete "the wastage of" and insert the word "unnecessary." Is there any further discussion to that amendment? Seeing none, all those in favor of that amendment say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Now, we have the main motion as amended before the bodies. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of that motion say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Thank you, Counsel. Next, we have a public hearing to amend city code chapter 155 dairy creamery uses in the C-3 district. Justin.
Thank you. The C-3 zoning district is the primary zoning district found along the Highway 61 corridor. It primarily allows retail sales, services, and a few more intense uses by special use permit. Dairies and creameries were once allowed within the C-3 zoning district by special use permit until 1975. And in 1975, the Hastings Co-op received a special use permit for their operation. It appears the language was eliminated at some time in 1996 when the code was rewritten. The removal of that provision made the existing creameries in that district non-conforming use so they can't be expanded or rebuilt. So, we are just proposing to put that back in there. And the staff is not aware of any issues that have come up with those creameries being in that zoning district. The planning commission recommended approval, 7 to 0, at their December 8th meeting.
Thank you for that presentation, Justin. I'm going to open up the public hearing. The public hearing is now open to anyone who would wish to discuss the amendment to code chapter 155, the dairy creamy uses on a C-3 district. Anyone here who wished to speak to that particular issue? It's not quite the topic of our times, but it's important nevertheless. Okay. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Counsel will bring this before us. What's your wish? Councilmember Alangi makes a motion to approve, seconded by Councilmember Brockes. That motion is now before the body. Discussion to that motion? Seeing none. All those in favor of that motion say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. That was the second side of my agenda. Here we go. Okay. Next, we have Public Works. We have an update presentation. I've been looking forward to this for quite a while. And many people know about the riverfront Renaissance that's going on in our city. And tonight, we are going to take a look at a presentation that's going to give us the latest update as to the Phase 2 final design. Nick, welcome to the meeting. Glad to have you here.
Thanks, Mayor Hicks. They think we'll have to let the computer warm up a little bit here before we get to it. But anyhow, as we're waiting for that, staff's been working with great intensity with our Boltman-Menk team to carry further the Phase 2 final plan development for riverfront Renaissance, taking off from our master plan that was adopted late last summer. And Jim Harbaugh from Boltman-Menk's here to give an update on that. Counsel will get another dose of the final design features in two weeks at the January 20th meeting as well as the project will be up for consideration to approve and move forward on with construction. So, I'll turn it over to Jim here. Hopefully, I log in correctly. Good.
Success.
Yeah.
Well, thank you, Nick, and thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm excited to show you some of the things that we were working on with Phase 2 of the riverfront Renaissance. Just want to talk a little bit about the area that we're working on. Just a refresher on the phasing of the multiple projects that are going on. I'll give you a little bit of a snapshot on Phase 1, which is under construction currently. You might have seen a pretty weird-looking tent down by the riverfront in the last month or so. And that resulted part of the construction. And then, really want to get into the meat of the matter tonight with refinements to that Phase 2 portion of the project, which really focuses on the public parking lot and all points north into the park there and all the elements that are going to be part of that. And then, finally, just a little bit of schedule. First of all, I do want to thank again all the people that really helped to put together this master plan. I thought it was a wonderful exercise in consensus building with the community. And just had a wonderful interaction with not only the steering committee, but also the general public as well. So, I just want to commend the city on that. So, phasing. Want to talk a little bit? Phase 1 is in the yellow, portions of which are under construction right now and are slated to be finished up next, late spring. We started fall construction because we knew we needed to get a jump on the construction, especially at the Veterans Memorial because we wanted to make sure that was completed by Memorial Day of next year. Phase 2 is in the red there, primarily focused on both the public parking lot and Levy Park in general. One thing to note, the alley west of Sibley there has been moved from Phase 2 and will be put into Phase 3 just based on type of work and timing on that. So, a little snapshot of inside that tent down at the river. This was done in December, pouring the plaza. They've put all the electrical in, the plinths for the relocated memorial boulder down there and setting it up for the memorial columns as well along. And just a refresher, at the depot here, Phase 1 will consist of park features at the depot there right on Second Street as well. And you'll see that during spring construction. Also, as part of the project, we're looking at wayfinding and signage throughout the downtown project, or downtown area. And we've worked with city staff in really refining that finalized wayfinding package as far as pedestrian and vehicular signage. We did pull that from either bidding on Phase 1 or Phase 2 because it can be a standalone project and it would be more cost-effective for the city to go out and direct purchase the signage instead of going out for bid on it. We've worked not only on the signage itself, but also locations for that and should be finalizing that up soon here. So, Phase 2, just a little bit of a refresher. This was the final document that we had as part of the master plan process, showing a lot of elements going on here with a parking lot and a drop-off amphitheater, rotary pavilion as part of the project, labyrinth, all sorts of things. And what I want to do tonight is walk you through all the elements, what we've done and what we've refined as part of the project. And if you have any questions throughout the whole process, this is very informal. Just let me know. I'm going to start at the top of the hill and talk a little bit about the public parking lot. Now, one of the things that you might notice on this parking lot is we do have a lot of green space in it. But we've also realigned the parking lot from the master plan. There's a couple reasons for that. One is we knew that parking was paramount for this project. And we wanted to make sure that we had the same amount or more parking than we have currently out there. And if you were to consider that it's gravel parking lot on the eastern side, we're actually exceeding the amount of parking that is currently out there with the design. The other portion of this is we did fight some grade issues on the eastern side. And with the realignment of the stalls here, makes it much easier for a nice drop-off area at the top of the pavilion area and really maximizes that parking count while at the same time bringing in some green infrastructure and sustainability as part of the parking lot project. Similar to what's out over by the depot parking lot, we're looking at a bio-cell plantings in the middle of that parking lot to treat this stormwater runoff before it gets into the river and downstream from there. So, I'm going to switch the orientation a little bit here. Now, the river is to the right. We're at the top on the end of Ramsey Street and walking yourself down to the pavilion where we have a nice drop-off area coming off Ramsey. We also have a drop-off area in the parking lot. And I'm going to grab my pointer real quick here. So, we have a nice drop-off area with a depressed curb here so that people can drop users off. We also have carried that around here because we know that we need lots of space for that. This is a public restroom at the top so that downtown merchants and users can use this, but also users of the park itself. And then, we have a grand sidewalk walking down to the amphitheater here that overlooks the rotary pavilion and then staircase down to the memorial portion right here, the Veterans Memorial. One of the things that has changed since the master plan is we are actually integrating the construction of the pavilion project within the city project. So, they are not two separate projects now. We feel that that's going to be a lot better integration as far as putting the two pieces of the puzzle together. And it's also going to make for one contractor so we don't have competing interest, if you will, of contractors. So, it works much better for the phasing and just the overall constructibility. So, we've been working, just starting off in the last month with Rotary Group, talking about the pavilion size, the design aesthetic of it, and how that relates to the amphitheater that we're constructing. We're really trying to maximize the space of the amphitheater itself so we get as much seating capacity as we possibly can, both in the stonework, but also spillover seating as far as green space and lawn space to utilize this really pretty significant architectural feature for the park itself. Another thing that we're implementing is a Four Seasons restroom in the downtown area. And this is just to give you an idea. We really want to make it a nice, long-term amenity for the downtown area. So, we're looking at doing heated, very durable materials throughout, both inside and out, and a nice location. And then, finally, added storage as part of that for use in the area as well. As far as amphitheater, here's some character images of what that amphitheater might look like. We are looking at using natural limestone instead of concrete for the seating areas themselves to start to tie into the aesthetic of what was done when the bridge project and what was done in some of the other elements in the downtown area to really keep that design aesthetic rolling throughout all of downtown itself. And this is what a section of it might look like as you're overlooking the pavilion. Another piece of the puzzle here is the labyrinth that is east of the pavilion area itself. Just to give you a feel for what that's going to look like, we have the circular labyrinth that will be able to be flooded in the winter so that it'll be a winter skating, recreational skating use. This is, we're not intending to put hockey boards up or anything. Just the shape doesn't allow that. But we feel like it's going to be a nice amenity. Another thing to add to that as amenity is, especially on a night like tonight, something to warm you up. And we're looking at an outdoor fireplace that's two-sided in this plaza area right off the labyrinth. Also, a nice gathering space really at any of the Four Seasons itself. That'll be, tie into a musical playground as well in that same area, which is right in this area. And just a 3D image of what that might look like with colored paving underneath it and the opportunity for kids to really integrate and have fun with some musical instruments that are a permanent fixture. And one of the things we talked about through that master plan is we wanted it close to some other elements so that parents could overlook one and the other at the same time. But we also didn't want it so close to the pavilion that would impact some of the performance space. So, hopefully, we got a nice sweet spot here. Little bit of a blow-up of the area here. This is what the labyrinth is taking shape with. It's really a paved surface with an overlay of the labyrinth structure. We looked at a couple different options, whether it be rock or plantings. And because of the skating and because of the durability, we really landed on something like this here. One of the other things that the city is looking at doing is also bringing in a warming hut as part of the winter activities. So, we're accommodating that with some space there. Just an idea of what that outdoor fireplace, this is going to be a gas fireplace. We're going to run a line out there so that we're not going to have to maintain, keep the logs rolling here. It's something that's going to be easily flip on and flip off. We want to, in all things that we do, we look towards maintenance as much as the creative, unique looks to it. Just some images of what those musical instruments might look like. These are permanent implements. That'll be out there, you know, xylophone and drums, wind chimes, that sort of thing, as part of the package here. So, we're pretty excited about this. A little bit of a blow-up of what that will look like. And it's going to be in a kind of a centralized location too. So, people utilizing the trail system are going to be walking by it. And we're trying to capture that traffic as well on a regional level. Another simple thing that we're looking at is a Minra River sidewalk graphic where we're actually going to sandblast in the Minnesota River in the Minra section within the concrete itself. So, people are going to walk over the river as they're going through here. And just to give you an idea of what that might look like, this is the depot in St. Paul, just to give you an idea of what it might feel like as far as sidewalk. Again, just another element that's implemented, something that you discover as you're walking through. Something pretty simple, but hopefully very striking. One of the things we looked at in Phase 1 was flood columns and how it integrated within the Veterans Memorial. And we had them ringed around there. Well, when we got into final Well, when we got into final design on that, we realized, boy, these are pretty darn, we had a lot of water at times. These are pretty tall structures, and it really kind of overwhelmed the Veterans' Memorial, and then we had a pavilion right just to the south of that as well. But we really wanted to keep these flood columns within the project because it really tells a good story of what flooding can do to a community and how tall, and we thought that, you know, as you're walking past that, just gives you really a good feel for how deep that water could be. So, we've pulled those off, put them in a different spot. We're actually putting them, flanking the trail system now, so that is, you're walking by, you can look up and see, and we're putting the, whoops, excuse me, we're putting the markers on both sides, they're mirrored, so that as you're walking through, you can actually look up and see how deep that water was, you're walking through. These would be a limestone material with etching on it. One of the things we talked about was the potential for having a picture opportunity, especially with the new bridge. This is a stone Hastings signage that we've integrated within the project itself, within the crossroads of some of the trail systems to the west of the pavilion, and are orienting it so that it's a good, nice photo opportunity, but also something that's interactive that you can play on, sit on, have the kids crawl on, so something that we've integrated as part of the project. So, finally, project schedule. We're under construction right now with phase one, and phase one construction down at the river should be done by May 22nd with final completion of all elements of phase one in June of 2015. Phase two design, which we're under right now, is to be complete in January of this year, and we're going out for bidding in February of this year. We want to get it out on the streets and get favorable bids as part of the project here, so get it out before it starts to warm up. And then, phase two construction, starting in March and go up to October. March, you may not see a whole lot of movement because we have to get through contracts and order specialty items and that sort of thing, but really, that's kind of the start of construction and forging on from there. So, with that, if you have any questions on any of the elements, please let me know. I'm excited about this project that's really coming together nicely and...
Thank you, Jim, that's coming along nicely. I just wanted to ask you, it wasn't on here, but I'm pretty sure it's in the plan about that area that we would like to make into an overlook, kind of dress that up a little bit?
Yes, I apologize, I didn't put it in here.
I know it was part of this plan at phase two.
Yeah, down at the river, there's an existing concrete overlook, if you will, down there, and we realize that it's really a pretty grandiose spot, but it needs a little TLC. So, as part of this project, one of the things that we've added since the master plan is dressing that up a little bit, and that has shown actually how we tie it in right here. This is river here, the existing overlook. We're looking at new railing around that and new surfacing on it as well to start to tie in with that overall aesthetic of the, some of the bridge aesthetics and some of the aesthetics here. It'd be a nice addition.
Thank you, Jim. Questions, councilmembers, or any questions? Councilmember Balsanek.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Where does Oliver's Grove fit in in the phases?
Oliver's Grove is part of phase three in the downtown improvements.
Okay. The reason why I ask is I've had, there are two businesses down in the historic district that are in the immediate vicinity of Oliver's Grove, and they are very interested in, for lack of a better word, I guess, adopting some of the amenities that would be in Oliver's Grove. One business is still in the conceptual phase, but it's moving along very rapidly, and I've been meeting informally with the group from time to time. It's a, it would be an artist organization that is for profit, it's not nonprofit, and there's going to be a lot of activity, visual arts, performing arts, musical arts, you name it. It's going to be quite exciting, and they are anticipating using Oliver's Grove to do some of the exhibits and performances. And so, they're hoping that they can work with you at some point to see what can be done to create some enhancements that would enhance their business just as well. So, I'll be sending you a couple of emails with some names of the people that would like to start talking with you about that when the time comes. It's very exciting. It's, I kind of liken it to a YMCA for the arts. There's a membership that people would pay on a monthly basis, come in to the store, and they've got access to all kinds of artistic materials. They can also purchase materials and then do their thing, anything from welding to, you know, to water, water color painting and so forth. Not that they do any welding in Oliver's Grove, but there would be, you know, some opportunities for them, they would hope, to exhibit some of the things that they're going to be offering, that and as well as the other store adjacent to them. So, I've got your email address, and I'll be sending their information to you, and then they'll be getting in touch with you at some particular point.
I think that would be great, getting ahead of the game as far as getting some of those ideas before there's any design put down for phase three. And just so you know, I didn't really touch on phase three at all, but as per the master plan, the discussion was 2016 construction, is that right, Melanie? I don't want to miss step, but 2016 construction, so quite honestly, that's not too far away. So, this isn't a very opportune time to start thinking about...
Right. This, I have another question, and it relates to the pavilion and the bowl seating. I don't know if you can...
I don't know if a plan view would be better, or...
There we go. That's good right there. We know that the Rotary has been doing a fund drive, and this was, conceptually, it was their idea to come up with the pavilion, and what I would like to know is, is their part of the funding just the pavilion itself, or does their funding include the bowl seating? Or is that something that the city is just going to be accountable for?
I think I can answer that for you, councilmember. I've been working with the Rotary Club on their fundraising campaign, and all the funds that are being raised are only in the structure, only on the structure itself.
Okay, so the seating...
Just the pavilion. The seating would be outside that preview.
Is outside of their fundraising, okay.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
And one thing I do want to note on the overall pavilion footprint and orientation of that, we're actually working with Rotary to finalize up that plan where we can maximize the space for the amphitheater itself versus the pavilion size. So, that overall footprint may adjust to the left or right a little bit, depending on how we come out with the Rotary discussion.
Thank you, councilmember. Is there any further discussion, questions or comments? Okay, thank you, Jim. We appreciate all the work you're doing, we're very excited about it, and we'll see you in a couple of weeks to put the final touches together.
Sounds good. Thank you for having me tonight.
Next, council, we have a presentation of the 2014 community survey. It'll be the last item on our agenda this evening, and I'll give Melanie an opportunity to kind of load this up.
Yeah, no, I think you're fine.
We have representatives here from the Morris Leatherman Company that did the survey, and they'll be here to give us the results of the 2014 community survey.
What a fine introduction, Your Honor. I'll turn it over to Peter Leatherman and Bill Morris.
Mr. Morris, nice to see you again. Welcome to our great city of Hastings. We're so glad to see you again.
Well, good to see you also, and I bring very good news tonight in a number of directions that the city has moved over the past three years. Just to review with you what we did, we spoke with 350 randomly selected households across the city. The telephone interviews were conducted in August between the 19th and the 27th. The average interview time was 31 minutes, which is a little bit on the long side, with one person holding the record of one hour and 41 minutes, and she also wanted us to know, she wanted me to thank Councilmember Schultz for giving us her name so that we could call her. We don't explain what a random sample is, and I also wanted to thank Councilmember Schultz for that because the validation took us 30 minutes flat in order to go over the things she said. She had been living in the city forever, basically for at least 50 years, and was able to comment many things on the survey and also a number of things that were not on the survey. The non-response level was a very low 4.5%. Keep in mind that the Minnesota poll currently draws a non-response level of about 33%. So, once people were contacted, when we found them at home, they were more than willing to talk with us, and this is projectable to within plus or minus 5.3% in 95 out of 100 cases. That is, if we were to do a census of the entire adult population, we would expect to be within plus or minus 5.3% on each of these questions. First, let's talk a little bit about city demographics. We went through and asked a battery of questions about the socioeconomic backgrounds of residents. For example, we asked them how many years they had lived in the community, and this is to provide us with a way of validating our sample. And the average amount of time a resident, an adult resident, has lived in the community is about 21 and a half years. There were 23% who were senior households, that is, a senior was living in that household, and on the other end, preschooler and school-aged children households were 36%. Roughly three-quarters of the residents we spoke to were homeowners, 23% were renters. We asked the approximate housing, not rather, rather, not housing value, but we asked for pre-tax income over the past year and found that your median is $71,500. As you can see, it's fairly well-distributed right across the spectrum from under $50,000 to over $100,000. And then, finally, we did take down the region of the city. We asked people four addresses so we could put them on a big pushpin map. That's the one non-technological thing that we do to ensure that we're getting a good geographic diversity across the community, and you can see that your wards are pretty much evenly balanced. Let's begin first with a question that we ask in most of our surveys across the metropolitan area, and that is, how would you rate the quality of life in the community? This time, we had 97% who indicated a positive response, while 3% indicated a more critical response. You see an increase of 5%, which is distinctly significant, from 31% to 36% among the excellent ratings, with an accompanying decrease in the good ratings. So, what we see going on this time is more of a shift toward the high positive, really no slippage and very, very little switch from negative to positive. And we're going to see this tendency occurring on a number of questions as we go through the survey, where you're actually moving from good to excellent in the minds of many residents. What do people like most about the city? This is an open-ended question. We asked this early so that we aren't putting any ideas into people's heads, and they can basically tell us what they like most, what's at the top of their mind. As you can see, small-town feel still ranks very highly at 27%, but that's dropped now from where it was three years ago at 40%, so it's not the overwhelming thing that's coming in. However, small-town ambiance certainly is playing a role. If we go through for a moment, friendly people, 15%, quiet and peaceful, 14%, close-to-family and friends, 15%, a market increase there, almost four times the level that we had three years ago. Being close to job, 7%, parks and trails, 4%. All of these tend to be small-town atmospherics, that is, they are not suburban responses that we would expect to see as we move in closer to the core cities. If we take a look in general then, things are pretty much static, with the exception that the generic small-town feel now is becoming particularized, and that's a good progression. As people now are able to point and explain more what they mean by that small-town feel, they're actually defining it for us in their own words. Now, if we're going to ask what people like most, we should ask what the most serious issue facing the city is, and I'm going to go straight down to the bottom of the chart. You'll see that there is a long line going out to 33% that says nothing. These are the folks that actually began to get a little angry at us for having the temerity to say that there was a serious issue facing the community. This also took up about five minutes of the conversation of the councilmember's person, indicating that they should not...
I am certainly glad that I never had you in class because I would surely fail.
No, you wouldn't. The 33% is five times higher than the norm across the metropolitan area. The norm in terms of boosters, who are the folks that are saying there is nothing that's a serious issue, is between 6% and 7% currently. That 33% is among the highest that we have across the metropolitan area. Now, what has exited? Well, finishing the bridge no longer seems to be an issue, that disappeared entirely. There are a couple of issues, though, that did stay as moderate concerns, youth crime at 14% and drugs at 12%. High taxes at 9% is a bit below the metropolitan area suburban average. That's at about 18% now currently across the suburbs. And after that, growth is becoming a little bit more of an issue, but again, anything below 10% we still consider to be a pre-issue. So, the two that I would point to again, as we did in 2011, is youth crimes and drugs as being most serious concerns people indicate. Now, no one indicates a concern at over 25%, which is what we consider to be a real major concern, and nothing is even close to the 20% range. So, again, we're looking at moderate concerns here rather than full-blown issues that people are becoming alarmed about. How about the heading of the city? Where do people see it going? Is it in the right direction or is it off on the wrong track? No change here, stabilized nicely. You had one of the highest ratings across Metro three years ago, you still have one of the highest ratings across Metro now. The 8% who indicated wrong track tended to take a look at taxes, tended to mention crime, and in particular, also mentioned juvenile crime and drugs. So, it was a replay there of the earlier question in terms of why the city is off on the wrong track. 90 to 8, though, is one of the strongest ratings that we have anywhere. We asked people new in this questionnaire, if you could, could you describe the city in one or two words or a phrase? How would you describe the city of Hastings to someone else? Well, 40% came back with small-town, very, very large consensus at 40%, given this is an open-ended question. 33% talked about quiet, peacefulness, that things are not hectic here, and that, I think, attaches to the small-town ambiance again. 16% mentioned the River City, which I've seen on a couple of posters and in other places, so no surprise there. But again, it's the small-town ambiance that's coming through. Friendliness is mentioned, 4% had scattered things to say. They liked a particular piece of public art, they liked the shape of the new bridge, they had things that really in and of themselves were more idiosyncratic than showing a general trend. But overall, it's the quiet and peacefulness of the community and that it is still in all a small town. Now, we then asked people, okay, think about non-residents, you may know, what's their impression of the city of Hastings? And 51% told us they have a positive impression. The reasons for it, it's a safe city, they feel it's a beautiful city, they feel that parks and natural ambiance plays a key role here, and the quiet and peacefulness again comes into play. 31% said they have a neutral impression, that is, most of my friends really don't know that much about the city. They know it's a city, and they also know where it is, but that's about it. And then, only 10% had negative views, that their friends looked at things negatively, and again, it pointed right back to rising crime and drugs being the two issues. and again, it pointed right back to rising crime and drugs being the two issues. So, in general, then, 51 percent or a majority feel that the impressions of non-residents tend to be much more on the positive side than either negative or neutral in and of This is our complete-the-sentence questions. What we asked people to do is to tell us whether or not they would recommend or not recommend the city of Hastings as a place to, and then we filled in the blank with five different descriptors. Now, two points on the scale are not being shown, and that is, I would somewhat not recommend or I would not recommend at all. The reason we didn't include those is because they came in in single digits in terms of non-recommendations. So, what are the strong recommendations that people would have in terms of endorsing Hastings? Well, first and foremost is a place to live. 72 percent indicated they would strongly recommend Hastings to friends. 27 percent somewhat recommended it. The other thing that comes through very strongly is a place to raise kids, 72 percent to 24 percent this time. So, an overall, then, of 96 percent who would recommend, then, the city of Hastings as a place to raise children. Now, what about on the other kinds of things? Well, doing business. 35 percent would strongly recommend, 44 percent somewhat recommend. The reason that's so small is that we did have on this one 16 percent who were just unsure. They couldn't really comment on the city as a place to do business. They've never really thought about it that way, and therefore, they wouldn't feel at ease either recommending or not recommending. As a place to visit, 53 to 40. 53 percent would strongly recommend it. That's incredibly high, given that we're dealing with cities across the metropolitan area where only about 25 percent, I'm sorry, there's a little bit of a shock in the computer, 25 percent would indicate they would advise people to come and visit. And then finally, a place to retire to, 86 percent is one of the highest recommendations we have anywhere. 50 percent would strongly recommend it, somewhat recommended by 36. Those that didn't feel they could recommend it, and again, this was a single digit, indicated that it was because of the rising crime and drugs that they would be hesitant to recommend it to aging parents or aging relatives and friends. Overall, though, very, very strong endorsement on all five of the completions, within particular as a place to live and as a place to raise children. Community characteristics. We asked residents next to tell us whether they thought the city had too many or too much of a particular characteristic. Was it about right, or were there too few or not enough? And what we've done here is we've put it in terms of a semaphore. So, the red indicates there's too many. Please stop. The yellow indicates it's about right, so let's proceed with caution. And the green indicates too few. That's perhaps something we'd like to see added into the community. Well, first, if we go through the yellow for a moment, majorities, for the most part, on perhaps all but three of the characteristics feel that you have about the right number. Affordable, or rather, affordable rental units falls just short by 1 percent, and that's a bit of a quibble. Luxury rental units fall short by 1 percent, and senior housing comes in at exactly 50. Now, what about too many? Well, the usual suspects that we're finding in the metropolitan area tend to come up here as well. So, the one where you have the highest percentage of residents saying that you've got too many of them is townhouses. And we're finding this kind of backlash, although here it certainly isn't a major backlash, as we found in some of your neighboring communities, condominiums. Some people feel that it might be good to halt the growth rate of town, I'm sorry, not condominiums, of townhouses within the community. Keep in mind, though, that you also have 57 percent here, a good, solid majority, saying that you've got about the right number. If we go down below 20, the only one that I think it would be fair to consider in that territory of some concern would be higher-cost housing, at 19 percent feeling there's too much of that already. But again, 59 percent saying that it's about right. So, in general, with respect to surpluses or with respect to inundation, to use a couple of phrases that people were using in their marginal comments, very, very limited in this community. Now, what are people saying there are too few of? Well, if we go through, the first thing that we tend to look for is what's at 40 percent or higher? And you've got two of them: retail opportunities and entertainment establishments. Throughout the metropolitan area suburbs currently, except if we're in St. Louis Park or maybe in Minnetonka, we find the same kind of pattern, that 40 to 45, 50 percent feel there are just too few contained within their community. 38 percent, though, talk about senior housing, that there's a need for more senior housing within the community. And if we want to extend that a little bit further, we could talk about the two at 33 percent. So, service establishments, again, taking a look at retail and business places, and also dining establishments coming in at 33. What's interesting to us is that in terms of your position in the metropolitan area, in terms of first-circle suburbs, second circle, third circle, moving out from the core cities, dining establishments is not the major issue that we expected to see it at. If we take a look at other communities within the ring, what we're finding is that's at 40 percent, even 50 and 60 percent at times. So, people are looking at that, dining establishments anyway, and 63 percent are saying it's about right, it fits all of our needs. In general, then, folks are just pretty pleased with where the community currently is. Things to keep in mind in the future would be more entertainment establishments and retail opportunities. One of the things that came through in that 43 percent, there was a lot of extolling the fact that it would be so nice to have one of those major, huge movie theaters contained within the community. We had a couple of people, in fact, that actually stayed on the phone with us for two, three minutes to explain exactly what they wanted in the particular theaters. We thought it was interesting. One wanted a smoking lounge, and the second one wanted kind of a bottle service being provided within the movie theater itself. Perhaps a little stretch beyond legality in both cases. City property taxes. How do people feel about them now? Well, you've gone from in earlier surveys, and I mean, much earlier surveys, from a tax climate that's been hostile, now into one that is borderline benign. What we have is 45 percent who feel that property taxes in the city are either very high or somewhat high, but 50 percent indicating they're about average. If we take a look at the low side, very, very few people are willing to use those categorizations. The changeover this time is the uncertainty dropped from 13 percent to 4 percent this time, and it moved into fairly evenly into both the high categories and the about-average category. When we look at this for interpretation, in general, and this is asked in a comparative sense in terms of where your city property taxes are in comparison to neighboring communities, we consider the property tax climate to be benign if the above-average goes above 50 percent and the high, very high and somewhat highs together, stay below 45. We've actually had communities over the past year in which the very high and somewhat high have been at 70 percent. Now, that we consider to be a very, very hostile tax climate. By the same token, we've also got communities where the very high and somewhat high are at 22, 23 percent, indicating a very, very benign tax climate indeed. How do people feel about a tax increase to maintain city services at their current levels? And the three-year switch in this has been toward more people favoring that, if it should become needed. The favor, the folks that supported that in 2011 was 28 percent, a little bit over a quarter of the community. That's now moved to 41 percent. Opposition has moved from 62 percent down to 54 percent. So, while there is a majority against, that would tend to indicate to us that there's beginning to be a softening of that majority.
Yeah, please, Councilmember. And excuse my voice, I'm losing it. Was the survey for the two years done at roughly the same time of year? I was trying to think about, like, whether people were looking at their property tax statements at about the same time. We're probably in the same season at least?
It was done about the same time.
All right, thanks. That helps a lot. Appreciate it.
How about a tax increase to improve or enhance city services? Well, there was about one-fifth of the sample that would support in 2011. That's doubled. That's now at 42 percent with 53 percent in opposition. Still a majority in opposition, but again, you can begin to see a softening, and the opposition has moved down from just under 70 percent to just over 50 percent. We would need, as my stat teacher used to tell me, we need three points for a trend, but nevertheless, the change is highly suggestive, in particular, the magnitude of the change between 2011 and 2014. The value of city services? The value of city services ended up actually going from good to excellent. If you take a look for a moment, 87 percent rated the value of city services in terms of the taxes being paid as either excellent or good. This time, we're at 86 percent feeling that way. On the only fair and poor side, the negative evaluations, we have 9 percent. Three years ago, 10 percent this time. The change has been in the excellent column, where the percent of excellence of the value of city services moved from 7 percent to 18 percent, over double where it was the last time. And this has to, I think, be factored in. When we took a look at where people were on the value question, we also found that they tended to be more supportive of a tax increase to maintain city services and to enhance them. So, people are beginning to see the value side of things in terms of the quality. Well, let's talk about the quality of city services now. There should be no surprise here. Let me go through very quickly. Lot of services on the chart. What we're looking for, though, is an ocean of blue rather than a red tide, and we have very, very little red up there. In fact, as you can see, as we go through, the average tends to be over 90 percent in terms of the positive ratings of excellent or good of all the services in the aggregate. Now, where do we see some red? Well, the one place we see some red, and we see that red everywhere, is on city street repair. This, in fact, is one of the questions that our phoneers are getting afraid of asking at times. In city street repair, you were at 12 percent with a negative rating. Keep in mind that the average rating now across the metropolitan area on that is 40 percent negative. So, it's been handled very, very well in terms of the city. We just have to keep in mind that the average on that tends to be about 55 to 60 percent positive. So, you're running well above that average across metro. On animal control, the only thing that sticks out there a little bit is 7 percent seems to be a little bit off in terms of where the rest of the services are. It's not exactly the same kind of thing that we saw in Shoreview the last time we polled there, where residents almost convinced us there were raging packs of Dobermans absconding with small children. But nevertheless, it's something to take into account as a, for review. Would people support a tax increase to move street repair and maintenance along better? And what we found was first, 44 percent told us no way. When we went through, and this is a bidding question for us, it's let's make a deal. We start at a random point and move up or down depending on whether they say no or yes, and we keep moving down until they tell us, stop already. The average, or the median tax increase that people would be willing to support is $2 per month, or about $24 a year for street repair and maintenance. But keep in mind now that there's a 44 percent group there that isn't going to support anything on this particular issue, and that would temper any kind of vote if one are required in order to undertake this kind of an action.
Can one assume their bill that if they think 87 percent, the way things are going, well, why would you need a tax increase?
That's part of it, certainly, yeah. The 44 percent who said nothing tended to be far more positive about city street repair Are there unsafe areas in the community? Still very, very low in comparison to other communities. It's gone up a bit, from 7 percent to 16 percent saying yes, but 83 percent are still saying no. How does this compare to the metropolitan area? The 16 percent indicating there are unsafe areas in the community tends to be somewhat lower than the norm. The norm on this is about 22 percent. The 16 percent, again, earlier, we saw that crime is becoming more of an issue, and that tends to also come into play then in the answers to this particular question. What are the public safety concerns that people have? Well, there've been some changes, but the two major ones are still pretty much the same. In 2011, drugs was a primary concern at almost one-third of the sample. That's dropped back now to 21 percent, while the youth crimes and vandalism has moved a small amount, from 21 to 24 percent. Those are the two big ones as far as people are concerned. Traffic speeding is coming up now from 7 percent to 15 percent. Violent crime has never been a real issue. Identity theft, no. Business crime, a little bit higher. Residential crime, somewhat lower. And folks that don't feel there's a public safety concern here actually stated about 18 percent. But the takeaway from this is simply, again, it's drugs and youth crime and vandalism that people are focusing on and centering on. Do people feel empowered here? Oh, my goodness, yes. I'm gasping again. The 85 percent yes is the highest that we have had just about anywhere, and you move 30 percent in the course of three years, from 55 to 36. 85 percent of the folks feel that, yes, they can have a say in what the city government does other than by just voting. The no on this was 12 percent. It dropped from 36. The norm on the noes across the metro area is 30. So, the 12 percent is a very, very low score in comparison to other communities, with 3 percent unsure. And this speaks more to the task forces and the kinds of community reach that the city undertakes, and is doing clearly a very good job in engaging client groups. Okay, let's proceed now slowly into job ratings. The mayor and council job rating. When we asked this in 2011, 84 percent approved of the mayor and council's jobs. That has since gone up to 86 percent. The change, however, has been a slight increase right at the level of barely statistically significant, yet nevertheless statistically significant, with 13 percent strong approval. The 86 percent, however, is a very solid rating in comparison to other communities. Now, what about disapproval? Disapproval actually fell from 9 percent to 8 percent, so no real change at all. And the one thing clearly that you have here that we don't have in a lot of communities is the uncertainty is single-digit. Most people feel they know exactly what's going on, the work being undertaken by the mayor and the city council. So, then, how do we interpret this? Well, it's 86 percent to 8 percent. That's an 11 to 1 ratio, if we do some rounding, and that qualifies certainly for the high decile, the top 10 percent of communities across the metropolitan area. City staff, also very good report. 82 percent rated the city staff favorably last time. It went to 90 this time. Disapproval dropped from 10 percent down to 7 percent, and the uncertainty, again, is very small, at 3 percent. The major change here, however, the 82 to 90 is statistically significant in terms of improvement in the positive rating, but clearly, the major change is the strong approval rating going from 3 percent to 20 percent. The 20 percent strong approval ratings is one of the highest that we have across the metro area. The 90 percent rating tied to the city council and mayor's rating set the city up certainly within the top 15 suburban communities across the metropolitan area in the way that people perceive city government. perceive city government. Now, let's talk about what we've referred to in past analyses as the jewel in the crown, and that is your parks and recreational facilities. We asked people first for a rating, a general rating of the facilities, and found that 96% rated them either excellent or good. We had 3% only fair and 1% poor. The 28% excellent is also very, very high. Certainly, again, you're in the top 10th, the top decile of suburban communities across metro. Now, how do people feel about the maintenance and upkeep of parks, trails, and facilities? Well, 100% told us a positive rating. 29% said excellent, 71% said good. No surprise there, because normally, we see a very, very tight correlation between the rating of the facilities and the maintenance and upkeep of the facilities. In fact, that's one of the cues that people use in providing the general rating. Moving on to principal sources of information about the city. In 2011, a majority of residents, you had what we called a concentrated communications network. That is one dominant source of information, and that was the local newspaper at 56%. That shifted somewhat now in terms of the principal source of information. That's moved from 56 to 38, and what's come up is the city newsletter from 22 to 28, and the website from 10 to 17. So if we're looking at it in terms of city-sponsored communications versus the newspaper, we have a 45% to 38% split on that, which is very different from what we saw in the past. Now, the other thing that's happened is the grapevine is becoming alive and is certainly lush in terms of you have two grapevines now. We may have spoken about this before. One of them is your younger parents in the community, and the other one is seniors, oh, perhaps we could cut it at 60 and above. The two grapevines don't intersect that much, and also have different perspectives on the city for the most part. We then took a look at Rivertown News. Now, here's a major change. In terms of the percent of people that said they received the newsletter, 79% said yes they had. That's a drop of 15%, though, from what we saw three years ago. When we asked whether or not it was being regularly read by the folks that received it, it was 89%, again, a drop of 5%. So the reach, then, of the newsletter has contracted over the past three years. Now, how do people feel about the newsletter? Well, among those that are reading it, and it is admittedly a smaller number now, we still have 96% who rate the content and format as either excellent or good, and only 2% are more critical. Perhaps the delivery system is not working as well as it has in the past. We noticed that younger renters in particular indicated that they were not receiving the newsletter. But by and large, it still shows that those who are reading it really do put a great store into the content, and the format also seems to be satisfactory. So in general, then, what can we say? Well, I think that overall, what these statistics show is that your citizens are very committed to value-based quality. That is, they still want to see a sharp budget pencil, but they also want to see high-quality services. And yes, there could be a contradiction there, but not necessarily so. And people now have gotten to the point, many of them, where they're willing to see their taxes go up a bit if necessary in order to keep those high-quality services. With your service ratings on average having a positive rating, each one of about 90%, that indicates that people are seeing the value and realizing the value. With the tax climate now being borderline hostile or borderline benign, depending on which side of the coin we want to take a look at, that also indicates a bit of an easing with respect to things. People are very pleased with the way things are going. That's clear. They recommend the city, they endorse the city on a whole series of lifestyle characteristics, whether it's for raising kids, living here, retiring here. But by the same token, they also indicate a real confidence in city government. They're not worried about Hastings losing something in the transition over the next few years. They want you to pay attention to the fact that keeping that small-town ambiance together is going to be pretty critical to them. But they're also willing to provide, there's a huge reservoir of goodwill now with respect to how people see the city and how people view the community as moving. That 33% boosters, as I said, is one of the highest we have in the metro area. Those are the folks that trust you, those are the folks that are willing to provide a lot more latitude in terms of the decisions you make. You're in the enviable position that a number of your neighbors unfortunately are not, in which residents are very pleased with what you've been doing. When they look at the past, they tend to put a good or even excellent stamp on it, and are very confident about the things that you're going to be doing in the future. That is, you're on the right road, and most of them hope that you continue to be so. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any questions? Councilmember Vaughn.
Thank you, Mr. Ware. I've got two quick questions. When you do your surveys, 350 is a great number for our size city. Do you, a lot of families are dropping their landline. Do you call cell phones also, or are they just landlines?
No, cell phones also.
Okay. And then the second question, when you talked about the city property tax, do you educate the other person that we're talking about, just the city portion of their tax or their tax statement that has school district and county and everything else with that?
We can do that, and at times, we've done it, but after that question has been asked. If we ask that question after saying, oh, by the way, your city share of the property taxes is 31%, that's giving them information that the rest of the population wouldn't have, and you're really skewing the question's answer at that point.
Okay, is there any further questions? Councilmember Schultz?
I just want to say thank you again for doing our survey, and you always bring us great news. I know you do the surveys and you're taking the information you get, but it's always great to have you come in. And I think you all might know that Professor Morris, in the late '70s, I had him at the U of M for a lot of interesting classes, so it's great to see you.
And I should also add to that, the council member was one of my star students.
There you go. You know, that's up from four, three years ago when you did the survey. So that's good. Well, thank you, Mr. Morris, for being here. We appreciate the work that went into this, it's valuable information. We use the results from three years ago in a lot of our planning work that we do. We plan to do so again, and it's very valuable information to us, and we appreciate your efforts. Thank you.
Thank you, it was great working with you.
Okay, next, there's comments from the audience. Are there any comments from the audience? Any comments from the audience? Okay, council announcements, are there any announcements? Any announcements? Councilmember Schultz?
Hedra is having its workshop on Thursday night, January 8th at 6:30. And we'll be, will we be here? Okay.
Okay. Any other further announcements, councilmembers? Okay. See, now, I just have a few announcements. First of all, the Parks and Recreation Commission will be meeting on Tuesday, January 13th, at 6:00 PM. The Operations Committee of the City Council, Chair Councilmember Balsanek, and Councilmembers Nelson and Vaughn will be meeting at 7:30 AM on Wednesday, January 14th, to discuss the 2015 improvement projects coming up this year. The Public Safety Committee of the City Council, which is chaired by Councilmember Longi, and has that meeting been? Oh, we have a change, okay? That meeting is no longer going to happen, so.
I guess you should chair it.
I think you do chair it. Okay, we're gonna do that on a different date. Okay, we'll get an update next time. I want to remind folks that the city offices will be closed on Monday, January 19th, for the observance of Martin Luther King holiday. The next regular scheduled city council meeting then will be on Tuesday, January 20th. The Utilities Committee, and that's going on, right? Okay, good. The Utility Committee, the Utilities Committee will be conducting a meeting that is chaired by Councilmember Nelson, also with Councilmember Brox and Ellen Schultz. They will be meeting at 6:00 PM on January 20th, excuse me, yes, 6:00 PM on January 20th, to discuss the Comcast franchise with the recent merger of Time Warner Cable. There's going to be a lot of unique situation there with that merger, and since we have the franchise agreement, Utilities Committee will be discussing that in detail. I will be on January 21st here at Hastings City Hall, 10:30 AM. I will be giving the State of the City address here in this council chamber, so anyone and all are welcome to attend that State of the City address on January 21st at 10:30 AM. And also, I'd like to wish our city administrator, Melanie, who's tomorrow is going to be your birthday?
It's not on your list, your wife.
No, I just put it on there. I had to make up for that, for the Public Safety Committee, so happy birthday, enjoy tomorrow. There is no other items before the city council, a motion to adjourn is in order. Councilmember Vaughn makes that motion to adjourn. Second by Councilmember Brox, that motion is now before the body. That is a non-debatable motion. All those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, nay. The motion prevails, and we are adjourned. I want to announce that upstairs, we're going to have a reception in honor of those who took the oath of office tonight. So upstairs for cake and coffee and refreshments. Thank you.